Tonight is to get over our proposed agenda for next Monday night's meeting. I will tell people in the audience and there will be nothing decided here tonight. This is strictly work session for us to have a chance to talk about these things that we have coming up in our agenda. And the main reason we like to do this is because a lot of times questions will come up and it gives us time to get the answers to those questions before we have to actually vote on something and decide something. So, next week, on Monday, if there's an issue on our agenda that we talked about tonight, please, please, come back. We will ask you to sign in to speak to that at the appropriate time. We will allow some discussion tonight on these topics. We won't get lengthy and we won't get confrontational on it. Just as much to try to explain the situation and look at all sides of these issues and to make sure our questions are answered. Appreciate everybody being here tonight. We've got a really good crowd and I thank you for that. We'll open court next Monday night at seven o'clock. Our invocation will be by Commissioner Taylor. You're good with that? Okay, and then our pledge will be by Commissioner Burton.
Good.
Okay. Burton will do the roll call. We hope, I believe, that we may get to have Commissioner Johnson back with us. He was released last Friday. He's not here tonight, but I think he planned, is he? But I think he plans to be here next Monday night. Glad to hear that. We'll approve the minutes from the March twenty-second meeting. They were presented to you. Have you seen any impressions needed in the minutes from the March twenty-second meeting? If you do notice something, please let Ayn read a note so that we can correct them prior to meeting. Late announcements. The Tennessee County Services Administration Legislative Conference will be held May twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. There is a registration form in your packet. If you would wish to go, please fill that out, turn that in to Ayn. And I will caution you, please don't say you're gonna go and not show up. We've had in time's patch, people say they were going and we paid for them to be there and then they don't go. And I just, that really is one of my pet peeves. I don't want to spend accounting money on somebody because they think they might want to go. You either make up your mind you're going or you're not. And we know that there are sometimes things come up beyond our foreseen circumstances. But just make sure you're wanting to go and we'll take care of your registration.
Yeah, I got that fit on that. All the rooms that were reserved for this at the park listed, they've opened these up. So there's, down there at the bottom, there's like use this code, whatever it is, because there's no more of those rooms. So it wasn't gonna be a hundred and twenty-five dollars per night for us, but now I think the price per night is three hundred if you stay there.
Well, I think there are other hotels that you could find nearby, closer. If you will contact TCSA, if they have cancellations, they can add you into that room block. A lot of times that happens. Anytime you have these things, if you think you're gonna go, go ahead and make your hotel reservation. It's a whole lot easier to cancel them if you don't need them without any penalty than to try to get them once that block is gone. But I've got a room, if you want a room, maybe we'll talk about it. But not.
So everybody on the town.
But I'm just saying, there are some other hotels really, really close and there is a show in Charlie that runs from the other hotel just there as well. Just glad that you're gonna be able to actually do this. It was looking like we'd covered, we had to not do it last year. And I'm just glad that the board, TCSA board, has seen fit to let us attempt to do it this year. It's a good event for y'all that haven't been. A lot of classes, a lot of things going over, new things that's happened in the legislature that'll affect county government. You'll have a lot of your legislators there that you can talk with them, network with them and interact with. That's the main purpose for going, it's informational. I also would like to offer our condolences, Mr. Bella, for passing his father. I know it's been a hard week or two. We appreciate you being here tonight. And just know that our hearts and prayers are with you and your family. Are there any other announcements?
Both.
Both, gentlemen?
The Parks and Rec are reading on that. We're still not, how it looks like, or their assistant managers to open the poos this year. We got another meeting first week of May. If we don't have enough then, the poos probably will not be open this year. So you know anybody that's been a lot or been assistant manager, they need to get ahold of this victim or the mayor's office in the next few days. We're, we gotta make decisions about opening the poos.
We're kinda close. I think, what, we have ten amendments so far left? We need three, four, five more and some assistant managers possibly. It's a good opportunity for the young people that are out of school. It would be a good opportunity even for some retired people that are anybody that would like to fill those roles, particularly in the management positions. So try to help us get that word out. Also, I'd like to remind you that Fifth District Commissioner position is still open. I hope for us to be able to vote on someone next week. We may still be able to do that. We haven't had anyone officially asked for that position to turn in the form. We've talked to a couple of people. We've had some people call and ask about it or ask what was involved with it. But as of today, we don't have anybody that says, "Yep, I wanna do it." So, help us, Mr. Bella?
I talked to Ms. Keesley the other day and she was interested.
Rhonda?
Rhonda.
Okay, tell her to come by Administration Bill and fill out a simple form says she lives in Denver. Okay, okay, that's good.
Contact her.
Okay, that's good. I know we, the mayor talked with one person and he called him. I talked to the lady today that said she would let me know by Wednesday if she was interested in possibly doing it. And so we still have time. We don't have to do it this month. We can do it next month. We were just trying to get this position filled timely so that we didn't go into budget season with that district being underrepresented by one person. You can think of somebody, give them a call and encourage them. And hopefully, maybe we'll have some names for next Monday night, but it's not looking likely. I will say that. Anything else under announcements? Amendments to the agenda, the one that was published and sent to you. We have three budget amendments we need to add. We emailed these out to everyone today. Budget Finance did look at them the last hour. They did approve all three of them to be sent forward to the full body. So I would ask you to add BA one forty-one dash eighteen. Did I get that number right? And BA one forty-one dash nineteen for twelve thousand thirty-five dollars. And BA one forty-one twenty-FB for eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. Those came over from the school board a little late. We got them actually the day after we put the packet together. We did get them in the budget finance and like I say, they did approve them to go to the full body. So we'd like to add those to the agenda. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Citizens' response to the agenda Monday night. We'll ask anyone that would like to speak to any of the items on the agenda to sign in with your name and the item that you'd like to speak to. And we will give you an opportunity to speak to any item that's on the agenda. Also, this is time for Director Scutus' report to be reported. Dr. Satterfield made that to the Education Committee and he will present that to the full body Monday night as well. County Mayor's report. Mayor, I think we'll hit him in the front.
Can you hear me?
In talking with him, we went over everything Friday before he left. There was nothing of consequence, I think, that we would, that he can't cover next Monday night. He will be here next Monday night. Committee reports. These are the committees that we have that have met this month. Student Committee met on April sixth. Education Committee met on April sixth. Emergency Services met April thirteenth. Parks and Rec met April fifteenth. Purchasing met April nineteenth. Budget and Finance met April nineteenth. Cozy zoning will meet April twenty-first. I think that's the only other committee meeting this week that we haven't had yet. Are there any other committees that have met or will meet this week? We'll take brief reports from them next week. Budget Committee, budget hearings. If you wanna make you a note, will be six o'clock every night. We're allotting two hours. We may not need two hours each night. May third, which is a Monday. May sixth, which is a Thursday. May eleventh, Tuesday. Excuse me, May thirteenth, if we need it. That'll be a Thursday. If you wanna go ahead and block those out on your calendar and they will be also showing on the calendar for next month when we get to that. Oh, excuse me. What happens when you get older and you talk too much? You talk a lot. Next, we move into our active business. Appointments and reappointments. Remember, hey, did you have any? I don't think we have any yet. We do have some positions open.
Yeah, I can get that.
The two deal with the Fifth District latency, that's at the time that we would do it. If we have to take a step forward on that. Also, I know there's an opening on the planning commission that the mayor's trying to fill. Not aware of any others right now. Under resolutions. We will take up two resolutions and three ordinances. First resolution that we have is a resolution to declare a portion of Front Street no parking. This is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash seven fifteen. If you remember several years ago when we did the criminal justice center in the community center, we geared it closed off. The end of the street that connected to the Front Street to make more parking in that area down there. This is a resolution to try to limit parking in the actual roadway. It is not an attempt to keep people from parking on their property alone, that roadway. It is an issue that people have been parking in the roadway. And until we designate that as a no parking area and strike those roadways, there's no way that vehicle legitimately could be asked to move their vehicle or forced to move their vehicles. That's what this is, what it's about. We have, I think, a map that shows you where this area is. Mayor sent out quite a bit of information on it, talked about it in student committee at length, I think. Mr. Bella, did you have anything to add on this or Sheriff, did you have anything to add on this? Questions, commissioners? Any questions from the commissioners? Ms. Baker?
What's the problem on the road? After I was by there at certain time.
So if you're in half a mile, take exit seven east to Florida five twenty-eight east toward.
At lunchtime, I'm at morning and I live by it. There was one van that's parked while he was driving.
And that, that would not be an issue because it is not on the roadway.
Right, and that's, that's not, that's not the case on it. Because I don't see a problem. I went by there and I'm not seeing cars parked in the road. So I don't know why I would do it. I mean, has anybody else had issues with this?
We do, we do have a couple of members of the public here, some of the property owners that are involved in this. So I'd like to give them both just a few minutes to explain the need, explain why they would or wouldn't want it. If they ask any questions of the body before we get into this. Like I say, this is not an issue that will be decided tonight. We will not vote on it. This is strictly for us to gather information so that we can make and inform both next Monday night. So, I don't know your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Tom Conover.
Okay, Tom, would you come up and use this mic, you manage it. Can you make sure it's on?
In half a mile, take exit one.
There it is. That's good.
All right, the problem seems to emerge out of nowhere here at Lake. I normally park like on my front door. And I own a building at two hundred Broadway. It used to be owned by Bill Scruggs. I bought the building from him in nineteen ninety-eight. And if there hadn't been a restriction about parking anywhere on that street, I'd have not.
A quarter mile, keep right at the fork. Follow Sunbury International Drive.
Parking lot across the street from there. And that was in a mix that's reading, I bought the building. And it didn't work out, so I did not put the business in there that I wanted to. I made it the street is twenty-seven big wide, which is wide for an alley. And I heard, I heard crap, the word Court Street referred to as an alley. And it would be the entrance to the back. And I think that.
Continue on International Drive for one and a half mile.
Park there alongside. I understand that will affect him also. Up where I live, and my door is on the first door, the old door on the building in Front Street. And we only have a loading zone in front of our building there. I'm loading none of them, so I can't park in front of the building. And I have a front door there and I have a side door on Front Street. And that's the reason we use that door is because of where we can put our car. Until now, there's a challenge down, I can't park anywhere near my front door. And I've got a spot in the back of my building, that's forty yards away. I'm only eighty years old. I'm actually a year away from that. I'm four hundred, yeah, four hundred days away from eighty. And while I don't feel it and so, told him the time I don't look it, I am. And so I'm a wife. We just like hauling groceries or grandchildren or our crippled dog. We've got a crippled beetle who's up by down over in this pankey. And anyway, he's learning to walk, walks and we walk up and down Front Street all the way to the, to the justice there. And so anyway, this would be devastating for us for one main reason, and that's it. I tried to sell that building and everybody said, "Well, there's no parking there." Open a park. Well, you have to park in front of the parking, either on the side of Front Street or at the back of the building. Back there where it's not quite safe because someone removed all telephone poles that would keep you from rolling near the creek if you made a mistake on your parking. And so, and then the nights when they play football, some of the big football games, we see several thousand people come into those games and they park everywhere. And I noticed in the letter that I got that someone said that, there you go, play down where they can park. They park everywhere. And they have to because so many cars are just gonna park. And so they fill up the parking lot and they fill up there beside the street and not see them park too deep on each side. And so that's never bothered me because I don't go to ballgames because I'm a little busy at that time. And so what I'm getting at is, for being handy, everybody likes to park near the front door where they can carry their stuff. And that could include groceries, packages, grandchildren, crippled dogs, whatever. Point of it is that everybody likes to be convenient. And I noticed that the guy who filed the complaint about parking on Front Street, he parks as close to the front of the store as he can, which I think is logical and smart and sensitive. And so I think that all of us should have that right. Now, everybody, as far as I know, since nineteen forty-five, has parked alongside Front Street to get access to that building. It was first built as a community center. I'm interested in the history of it because I know it. I found some of the old records from it. It was City Hall and the fire station and that, that building's gonna fill lots of stuff. And so anyway, my concern is my ability to sell a building without making all and it would be that I'm going right now by being able to pull up and park. Now, there was mention about truck drivers. I have been an over-the-road truck driver. I have been a bus driver over the road. We were in musical group. We traveled all over the country in a bus. So I've driven many, many, many thousands of miles and backed into many, many places that were a lot tighter than Front Street when someone's parking on site. I talked to the delivery drivers that delivered to the Bella, the complaint, Mr. Satterfield. And they said, "It's no problem." They don't have a trouble backing in there with semi park. I showed him what I was talking about and two of them had told me the same thing. They said, "We can get in and out." And now they have fifty-three foot boxes with their semi trucks rather than forty foot boxes back in the day when everyone was building the field and setting.
Then you will arrive at your destination.
I just wanted to cover a few of the things here and let you know that I think there's a tendency to teepot here because I've noticed that Mr. Satterfield, and I wish he was up at least door, is now unloading up on Main Street. And it's marked for unloading. They've got several parking spots up there. And I notice he parked, he's told to this front door again. And so all I'm asking is that we be left to say, "Thank you." Thank you guys.
Appreciate it. I appreciate you. Mr. Satterfield, if you'd want to speak as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Appreciate you being here.
We are, my wife and Chantel Smith, are the owners of all your personal hardware. I know we've only been here two months. Yes, we have parked in front of the building for unloading products that we have unloaded. Most time we leave front of the building parking places for our customers. So it's not true that we park up there all the time. And I've never seen a sign in front of our building that says anything to the contrary of a free and unload zone up there. The problem with the back there is that I drove tractor trailer for thirty years. I bought everything from a miniature trailer or a pub trailer, as a lot of people call them, all the way up to seventeen, eighteen foot wide tractors, coast to coast. I'm very familiar with the trucking industry. I'm very familiar with the fact that we tried to get a tractor trailer in there the other day with his truck parked there and the guy was concerned that he had to stop just short of that. Judge Lindell comes down and unloads our trucks. And Judge Lindell said he had to go around and come back down in between alleyway to get back there to him because he couldn't get through to unload that truck. The drivers have said that they are not gonna back down that way no more. If that truck's sitting there because at least a little bit of an inch, they hit that truck with a DOT bumper, that truck's gone. If the truck's not there, then the Mercury Marquis there. I agree. It is a convenience thing for him to park at his front doorstep. You know, we all love convenience, but I would just like the convenience of loading my tractor trailers too and getting product in the store for us to have a legitimate business downtown.
Mr. Bell?
How often do you have truck and trailers in there?
Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, generally on Fridays. If they come, they'll come early in the morning and they just normally have one pallet. So we'll pull them on side of Broadway out there and just have Judge Lindell unload them while I unload them out there. If it's just some of the little totes, which one of our carriers does have totes time to time, we just pull them over on the side of the road after I unload them. But the salt for pools, the sand for rivers, those are three thousand to four thousand pound pallets. The water softener salt, we were talking about getting it. Old Dominion refuses to back in there. So therefore, we can't get that in at this time.
Commissioner, anyone have a question?
I got a question, I'm sorry. How are you getting your stuff tonight? Are they unloaded in the front of the store?
We've been unloading it behind the friends building at Judge Lindell's steel shop. And if he goes to my little red, white trailer that's six by ten, then we have to bring it out there and unload it, handle it.
So and your drivers have told you that they will not back there?
They're not backing down the street no more as long as that truck's parked there because if they hit it, they're responsible for it. And you can understand that.
Yeah, I mean, you too, wrote about it. I mean, you got to understand, that's his, his problem.
Yeah, that's true.
He's trying to park it. I mean, is it great enough or he would park it?
Well, the thing is that he's not telling you, the thing is that, yeah, his door's right here. From here to that glass is a parking glass that he parks two of his other cars in his lawn mower. He parks them there all the time. He just parks that one vehicle in the front of his door a lot and that's where the problem is at.
And you get deliveries all in?
Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, generally.
Early in the front or how early?
Sometimes it's late, it's four o'clock. Sometimes we get them as early as seven o'clock. I mean, we open the door at seven thirty. Another thing that I would like to make mention is when I first talked about this with the mayor and Bill Scruggs, they came down to the back of the parking lot and we were talking about it. The only thing that we even talked about at that time, which I've been told by other sources that it's wrong since then, was from the back of our building to Broadway, that section there, had nothing to do with alleyway, had nothing to do with down near the base of our football field, just from the edge of our building to Broadway. So that we could just unload a truck, takes less than thirty minutes, and we move on.
My understanding is it has nothing to do with the alley on Court Street. Strictly the paved lanes of parking at the back. Now, not anything that's off of the paved parking, would be what would be considered the street. I understand Mr. Trump can park where he wants to park, but he technically is parking in the street where, where that is. So it's an issue. I don't know whether this is the proper solution to this issue. That's for all the commissioners to decide. Appreciate you, what you had to say about it. Is there anyone else here that had anything would like to say about it? Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Conover, is your property so residential here, you live at that property?
To be honest with you, I do not know. I would think it was a building that I bought and I can't imagine that it's possible.
Do you want to find out, Mr. Conover?
Sam, do you know for sure whether that building is commercial?
I believe all of the downtown is commercial down Broadway. It'd be two hundred Broadway. That correct was company. I would never run.
Why, why is it two hundred Broadway?
While he's looking for that, are there other questions?
I got one.
Yes?
What happened with Foster Bettergait put a time frame on it. In other words, no parking between this time or whatever the truck is, come down and unload and go for mine. You know what I mean?
That has been discussed. Look, I'm pretty sure it's uncommercial where the building is. Look, I'm pretty sure it's not commercial where, where the building is, Mr. Walsh. I'm ninety-nine percent sure of that. Sam's still looking, Amy looked, she said it's commercial. I'm remembering that it was commercial, so I'm pretty sure it's commercial.
The reason I ask is I don't want to live in somebody parked in a residential zone in front of their own house. I would be unsure of that whole land, so to speak. And I agree with you, can you make certain times, certain days, certain times?
And that's one thing that was explored, we talked about earlier, is, is, you know, perpetuating parking between hours of six AM and six PM or something to that. Felt like it would be really hard to administrate was, I believe, what was brought up at that time. But certainly, yes, we can do that. Ms. Ford?
Is there any way that you two gentlemen could get together and see if you could come to some kind of a solution that would be satisfactory to both of you?
Well, I'd be more than happy to do it, but in conjunction with the first time I spoke to him about the truck being there, his, his conversation with me was, "I was here before he was, and I'll be here long enough to have you here."
Well, that's probably the way I would say it. And if you did. Sam?
Good to see you, boy.
Okay, it is downtown commercial district. All right, I think, uh, we have plenty to think about, plenty to talk about, uh, between now and next week. That town will take it up. We'll entertain a motion to approve it, or disapprove it, or we can, uh, take no action. We'll take an action on it next week. Okay? There's several other items, so let's move on. Appreciate y'all being here. Uh, please be back next Monday night at seven o'clock, and we'll take this up again in an official, official way. Any of the other property owners down there, if y'all have questions, just name it, anybody, just let us know, and we'll try to, we'll try to answer them for you. Thank you. Next is Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve dash seven sixteen. This is a resolution to establish a redistricting committee. Every ten years, we have to go through redistricting after a census. This is for the county. Uh, this will be the redistricting for the county commission districts and the school board districts. Uh, the mayor is charged with appointing this committee. It can be as few as three people, uh, or as many as five people. The mayor is suggesting, uh, Steve Paxton as commissioner of elections, myself, Kent Moreland, who is also on the election committee, Commissioner Marion Baker, and, uh, Sam Edwards are building officials. We are the ones that, uh, have been or are, uh, most familiar with the county, county roads, boundaries, growth, boundaries, things of this nature, I believe is why he, uh, he appointed those people to this committee. That's what that resolution is. Uh, myself and Mr. Paxton, uh, chaired and vice chaired this committee ten years ago. We're familiar with what's required, what's needed. Uh, it's a tedious process. We're not going to get the information until September. We're supposed to have this done by December. So it's something that we're trying to get ahead of and, uh, put it in place, uh, so that we can, so to speak, hit the ground running. The GIS program that we have in the property assessor's office that we bought several years ago, Mr. Potts has assured me that that will be available to us to be able to use to, uh, aid us in this process. Any questions about that?
I have a question. You get based on the population, uh?
Yes, it's census blocks, whatever the census block is that the census puts together, they give us the figures for that block, how many people live in it. We have to have each district the same amount of voters, plus or minus five percent. There are other things that play into it other than that plus or minus five percent. You want to try to put your high-growth areas at the lower side of the five percent. Uh, also, in predominantly minority districts, such as our fifth and seventh district, we need to try to keep them intact as much as possible so that we don't interfere with minority block voting. Uh, also, we try to keep any elected officials within the boundaries of their district. And there are several other things that go into this. It's, it's a, it's a very time-consuming and tedious job to make these boundaries where they're, they all fit and try to keep everybody in it. But this is the committee that will be dealing with that. Certainly, when this committee meets, anyone that has interest in this will be able to come and give their input.
Any more questions?
Yes, sir.
We're, we got to determine if it's going to be additional district or a minus.
No, we, we can't change the number of districts, the boundaries will change. The boundaries will surely change. Uh, we've had a lot of growth in the western part of the county, and this is going to be, this is going to be hard this year. Our last time is going to be in a harder decision.
Do you have any idea where the most growth in the county is? Number, I'm sure it's probably at two thirty-one, eight, or something like that.
Two thirty-one quarter.
Is it, is it going to be a really big factor?
It's hard to say exactly how it's going to chop out. I mean, your, your fifth district now is ten floor, but it goes all the way down to two thirty-one on the western side, all the way down to, uh, New Grand Spur. Uh, and we had to do that because the blocks were so big in the sixth district. We hope we can, uh, make some of those smaller. Uh, what you're going to see is geographically, probably the sixth district shrink substantially. Uh, it, it's just hard to say if we actually get into it and start cleaning them. But it will change. But I assure you that anybody that's elected in a district, we're going to make every effort to keep you in that district. The problem is, if you're living on the edge of one of these boundaries between districts, like when I was first elected to this commission, I was in the fifth district. I was like the corner house on the fifth district. Now I'm in the seventh district. You know, and I'm kind of the corner house on the seventh, on one side of the road, so I may move to another district. So you can look at your district and where you geographically lay in that district, and if you're on the edge, you're in danger. If you're in the build, I wouldn't be too concerned about it. Okay? But it will coincide with the next election. You're not going to be put out until the next election, like, okay? All right, that's the two resolutions we have. There's nothing else about that. We'll move into ordinances. First ordinance is two fourteen dash twenty twenty-one oh five. Uh, this is a rezoning ordinance to rezon a partial of oh five oh four, tax map nineteen from C two to a combination of C two R two. This comes forward from the planning commission. They voted and recommended this on April twelfth. Uh, you have, uh, received a map and a, their, uh, statement of what this is and why they recommended it. So that's one thing that we'd ask the planning commission to do, to thank them, particularly Commissioner Baker, for providing that information for everyone. Uh, this is for a subdivision out there on McMorry Boulevard on the left, just before you get to Blankenship Automotive. They would like to keep the front car, uh, as commercial, uh, and that would, would not interfere with your commercial zone. And then the rear portion, uh, changes to R two to be able to build some home lots. Uh, is the range for this. Ms. Walsh?
Is, is that a fourteen point four acre lot or twenty twenty oh eight? I don't think. Do you know how much that's going to be for residential? And Ms. Walsh, there should be a map for government. There's a legal structure that, uh, I would, and, uh, Matt, I'll make sure you have it included. But it is, uh, already surveyed, so it shows exactly the course of being requested and plan along the survey and portions of the zoning. One part of this, we don't need one quarter, and then another part of this, twenty five oh eight.
My understanding was that the twenty point eight oh was the total property, and the fourteen acres, fourteen point four oh is the R two that they're requesting at the back. That's my understanding. It's not stated very clearly. Ms. Baker, can you add to that, that threat? So approximately six acres at the front will remain commercial, fourteen in the back will go to R two.
Mr. Karen?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't matter that the owner's names are spelled wrong in different places?
I wouldn't think so.
I'd have to say, tell you the example listed on that, so I can tell you what the same one has said.
We, we can correct that, I'm sure. It's not that way on the ordinance, too. The name's not on the ordinance, so, no, that's just documentation. But the ordinance itself would be the only thing that would be a matter of surprise.
What came from the planning, it's confused, it's crazy, but the names are different on each one, I see.
Thank you. The thing they're trying to do with this is maintain that commercial harbor at the front.
How often do we do this where there's two, two different buildings?
We, we've done this in times past. We did this quite a bit where we'll cut like an R one tract off of an A one or something to that fast where you're not rezoning any private property. Um, it's, it has been on the court here.
It's actually quite common, we do it all, when?
I got some properties left.
Yes. I think we have a lot of properties under one owner that part of the front is commercial, the back is residential. Even, uh, the properties out other places along there, eventually. Just depends on how big a tract of land it is. This property does have natural gas service, sufficient water, sufficient sewer. That was a lot of the reasoning, I believe, for the planning commission's recommendation of it. Any further questions about it?
Other questions?
Yes, sir.
Especially fourteen acres. We got, that property going to be commercial or they got it?
Six acres at the front, fourteen acres in the back will go to residential. Total of twenty acres. Any further questions? We'll try to answer your questions, more specific questions between now and next week. If you happen to skip with Sam, or like I say, myself would be glad to do it with you. In the essence of town, I'd like to move on. Ms. Ford?
That's what we'll make a comment. For at least thirty-five to forty years, when you've got highway frontage and you don't have no more than we've got here in Drowsen County, you try to keep that front so that business can, can move in. And then behind those businesses, you usually do it for residential. We've been doing it for forty years.
This is nothing new.
It ain't nothing new.
All right. All right, let's move on. That's okay, like I said, if you have further questions, we, we want your questions answered. I'm not trying to bait them, just in essence of town, we have several other things to cover. The next one is another written ordinance. This is ordinance two fifteen twenty twenty-one dash oh six. This is partial oh oh nine, tax map twenty-seven V, taking it from Route A or Zone A to R, I'm sorry, from R two to C one. I'll get it out here and I'll spin it out here and then. Uh, this is a lot that's, uh, located on West Main Street, right up the road here above the post office. If you're familiar with where the post office is, there's a building next to the post office. There's some lots there that have kind of been cleared off in the last few months. Uh, if you look here at the, at the map, to the right would be the post office. This is the lot up there that's about the center, center of that property. This is to take it into the C one. Uh, the lot immediately to its right there, thirty dash oh eight is on C one. Uh, you're basically going to be extending your downtown C one, one more lot up the road.
Is this the lot that Mr. Lee's committed inside his front for four hundred?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. There may be an analogy tied there one day, I don't know. Uh, it's that, it's got, is this the, the one that's got the concrete slab in there, Sam, or is it beside it?
I'm just questioning, I'm not, I'm sorry.
It's the, the property up here we're talking about, the other side of the post office.
Oh, okay, so you got the one that's, you got the building already on the concrete building?
Right.
Uh, it's a lot next to it.
Okay.
But, uh, the one concrete building is already C one, but just one thing, other lot connects it.
Any questions about it?
I'll tell you.
You're, you're just, you know, it has been commercial in times past. It just wasn't mapped that way. You're just extending that downtown commercial district into what's actually already been used as commercial or has been. If you have questions, give it to Sam. Uh, next is an ordinance two sixteen twenty twenty-one dash oh seven. Uh, this is an ordinance to change the zoning from A one to C one on parcels twenty-six point oh five and twenty-six point oh six, tax map twenty-nine. This, the old Gregory Sail Barn on two thirty-one, just south of the Paint Store intersection. This is the lot immediately to its north. Now, if you're looking at this, this property, this map, uh, twenty-six oh three, where you see the Red Roots buildings, that is commercial property. The Sail Barn and all that is commercial property. This is the lots that lay in between two existing tracts of commercial property. So you're just making that reflect the use around it.
Is there much on each of these?
There is.
That residence up here in the back right corner, see in the middle there?
It's said on commercial property.
It's not commercial because they have?
That residence is not commercial?
Yes.
All right.
They have commercial business in those red buildings at the back.
Is that where that car ends?
Yes, in the front of it.
These are the only two lots in between all those that are, are not commercial about it.
Is this the same owner that would be commercial on for that, uh, this is a granite tower?
This is a different owner.
Okay.
Different owner, but just north of that property.
Yeah, that granite tower, I hear, that goes with it.
Yeah. Any questions about it?
So any plans, anything going in there, or they're just?
I think they're planning on doing some sort of bottom motive, uh, possibly, uh, auto repair, body shop, auto sale.
Auto repair is his first business that he's looking at doing. He said if he takes it down the road, he might do more, but right now it's auto repair.
I think that's all stated on that statement of recommendation and, uh, applicant's information from, uh, this, this there with your faculty. This was recommended by planning commission. Any, any other questions on it? Give it to Sam, if, if you have any further, more detailed questions or you need more answers. Let's see, what else do we have?
Budget amendments.
I will be, be sheets that are later this time.
Yes, we, we have requested that, planning said that they'd be glad to do it, and we're glad we did. And we always, Baker, I think, a big hand of applause or whatever for doing that, she's the one that did the labor from putting that together for us. All right, budget amendments. We covered them in budget finance last, uh, last hour. All were recommended to the full body. Uh, most of them concerning the one-on-one general fund, and, uh, some having to do with the, uh, county school fund, the one forty-one fund, and one one-eleven fund. I think next Monday night, we can take all of these, except the one forty-one fund balance draw from the school board. We will need to do a roll call on it. And street, that's great, street skates and that one. So we'll have two that we'll have to do as, as a roll call vote. We can go over all of these right now. I'd rather just take questions on any one of them, if someone has a question at this time.
I have a question on the SRO. How many SRO do we have?
Three, one in each school campus.
Is that eighty-six thousand divided by three for each one, or is that-
We have a headboard in the budget. Any other questions on any, any, I, I, I'm not trying to, I, I want your questions to be answered. I just don't want us to go over something we don't need to necessarily. There again, if you have further questions, we'll talk about them. Any questions? Yes, sir.
So this is that the, we will be funding all of the tires?
Yes, that's correct. State legislature, there's been some law that says that the sheriff's department, they're his personnel, they need to be under his, and education shouldn't, I don't know whether that's passed yet, but they probably will if it has it. Look at this, there's been some back and forth with the school board and the sheriff's department. Felt like this was the best way to handle it, is just let, there's the sheriff's people, let the sheriff be in charge of it. And we had voted, this body had voted several years ago, that we wanted SRO in each school campus, and just trying to save it. That, that's where we're at. Yes.
Are we going to budget the school budget with that at seventy-five thousand originally? And so, is there a way to take it out of the school budget, or the sheriff's budget?
We're looking, we're looking into that. We're looking into that. I don't know that once, you might speak to that, Mr.?
What you have, you're gonna have an MOU between the schools and sheriff's department. The name that do with the commission, I was telling you, the commission. The issue with schools, they still have an obligation though, for certain amount of funding, because they're got to provide those officers with a place to head to school. That's the equipment that go along with it, in order for them to do the jobs. You're gonna see some of that, but some of the cost sharing arrangements that you've seen before are not gonna be in place. That'll be one, one of the, specifically through the sheriff's department, is what you need to get done. There is, if you go back, when this all started, this is the great experiment that you had in this state. Because if you had, the first time, you really had a whole mixing of, of, of schools and primary response, registration, law enforcement, you put them in the same basket. So it's evolved a lot since those days, and, and moved, the trend that I've seen, and the proposed legislation that had been discussed, and whether it's actually gonna go to the general assembly this year or not, was for to create a lot of problems, and a lot of the responsible governments have been having, where who pays what we are paying. And so, and from the case law, where the elaborate search that is primarily, it should be, it still a function that goes to the, uh, the sheriff's department.
So do the cost problems when the school pays for it, they, 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 what is everything to do? Yeah.
And to all new respects to the Department of Education, they're not in the law enforcement business, and the, the things that they see, there's certain requirements that they do. Sheriff's Office is gonna have, does not need to be delegated, and cannot be delegated, to the Department of Education. And we're, we're cleaning up a lot of those issues through discussions for coming into this new year, what the MOU should look like.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Any other questions on any of these questions? Like I say, if you have questions, we'll try to get you specific answers for you. I'd rather ask them today, ask them tomorrow, ask them Monday morning. I'd rather watch you blindside this Monday night. I appreciate it. If you have questions, if we get your answers for them, please. No worries, I'm sure we'll have some, I haven't got the list from Rita, a fresh list yet. Any other business before the commission? Amy, do you know anything? Other comment, anybody from the public like to make a speech? I see no creatures, no questions. Mr. Walsh?
I have a motion adjourned.
We have a motion adjourned. Have a second, by Mr. Jones, on the favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Get out of here.
I tried.